Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order here. It is five o'clock. We need approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor of the agenda as yes?
Yes.
Oh, by roll call, Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, Lavender?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
Yes, and myself, yes, so that's four zero. And let's see, public comment regarding closed session items? No, we will then recess to closed session and be back here at six o'clock.
We are back from closed session. Thank you, Vice President Adams for opening the meeting. I was running a few seconds late. Welcome back to our open session of the Castro Valley Unified School District Board of Education. We took absolutely no action in closed section, closed session, so we have nothing to report out. With that being said, I'd like to hand things over to Trustee Whitaker, who will read the district mission statement.
Thank you. Our mission is that we work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you. Next item, do public comment instructions? I don't have them, and that is okay. I will get them. Oh, sorry. I apologize. It's totally, let's look, I'll just look underneath here. So we're just looking for a piece of paper. We will say something about the basis of public comments. We like them a lot. They can be up to three minutes each, so we have, we have two opportunities for you to give public comment. On each agenda item, you are allowed to give public comment, and we accept public comment online. There is an online form to be completed. If you are here in the room and you'd like to make a public comment, there are cards in the back of the room. You can either just write a comment, or you can say, I want to say something. And we are not able to respond to those public comments. We love hearing from you, but we will not engage in a conversation with you, but we think it's really great when you exercise that right to actually speak. So I think I covered all the basis of it, yeah. So thank you very much. So without further ado, I see a lot of orange in the room, and I'm happy to welcome Chabot Elementary School and our Tigers. We're going to have a school presentation from Dr. Hosseini. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, C V U S D Board of Trustees, Superintendent Ahmadine, and the executive team for this opportunity. No worries. I just want to take a moment to welcome the folks who are here this evening. We have Chabot students, families, as well as our staff, so welcome. Thank you for being here. In our school presentation tonight, I will share a highlight from our school year that demonstrates our commitment to our district's core values, specifically related to empowering our students to thrive in their own academic journey and providing safe, inclusive learning environments where all are welcomed and treated with kindness, respect, and dignity. I would like to begin by sharing our school vision. At Chabot Elementary School, we will meet the social, emotional, physical, behavioral, and intellectual needs of our diverse community of learners to ensure that each student is challenged and successful. This evening, I will present about the work that we have done this year at Chabot to support our students' development of digital citizenship skills and to bring awareness to this important topic. As a part of our positive behavior intervention and support system, we enter behavior referral data in our school-wide information system known as SWISS. The data is then summarized and analyzed by our staff to make data-informed decisions about educational supports for our students. An analysis of our 2021-22 and 2022-23 SWISS data showed that there was a need at our site to support our students in enhancing their digital citizenship skills and in using technology safely and responsibly. Teaching digital citizenship to our students is important because it provides them with the skills and knowledge that they need to navigate the online world responsibly and safely. In today's digital age, it's essential for our students to develop basic digital literacy skills early on. Teaching them about digital citizenship helps them understand how to use technology effectively and responsibly and educates them about online safety practices. Children need to learn about appropriate online behavior, just like they learn about good manners in daily life. Teaching digital citizenship helps them understand concepts of respect, empathy, kindness, and responsible digital communication, such as thinking before posting content, being mindful of others' feelings, and maintaining a positive digital footprint. It also fosters critical thinking skills, allowing our students to evaluate, analyze, and question the credibility of online content and encouraging media literacy. Teaching digital citizenship empowers our students to become responsible, safe, and positive participants in the digital world. By engaging our students in discussions about digital citizenship, we empower them to make responsible and informed decisions in their digital lives and contribute positively to online communities. Our first task was to create a school-wide responsible technology use policy that was in elementary-school-age-friendly language. Our goal was to establish a foundation and agreement for our students regarding their digital practices. A draft of this document was created at the end of April 2023. We reviewed and finalized this document in May 2023. The expectations are written in "I" statements. For example, "I will take care of school devices as if they were my own." Or, "I will keep my password and account information private." "I will give feedback and comments in ways that make others feel supported." The information in this document is aligned with our C V U S D Acceptable Use Policy Agreement. At the start of the school year, Chabot teachers introduced the information in this document to our students, and copies of this document were shared with Chabot students and families. In September 2023, Chabot-certificated staff participated in a digital citizenship staff development session presented by the C V U S D Technology TOSA. The presentation included information about various resources, including Clever, which provides a single sign-on for the online apps that our students use, and Common Sense Media, which provides online resources, information, and curriculum related to digital literacy and digital citizenship. In October, Chabot celebrated Digital Citizenship Week. We had five spirit days. On Sports Day, our students learned about media balance and well-being. How do we balance our time with technology? We represented our favorite sport to celebrate getting outside and moving. On Superhero Day, our students learned about online privacy and security. How do we stay safe online? We dressed up as a superhero, keeping ourselves and others safe online. On Unity Day, our students learned about appropriate online communication. How do we show kindness online? We wore orange to unite for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion online. On Wacky Socks Day, our students learned about the importance of safe and responsible digital footprints. What footprints are we leaving behind? We wore wacky socks to think about our digital footprints. And on Hat Day, our students learned about digital literacy. How can we know if something we see or hear online is true? We wore our thinking hats to remember to ask questions about what we see online. This is our school-wide Paw Power P B I S matrix, which is a table that defines expectations in various settings throughout the school campus, including the learning areas, the multipurpose room, the hallways, and the office. Along one axis are the expectations, while the other axis includes locations in which these behaviors are expected. This matrix is included in our school handbook. Paw Power stands for Practicing Safety, Honing Responsibility, Working Together, Empathizing, and Respecting Others, Property, and Oneself. This year, we added a new column to our Paw Power matrix, which outlines the behavior expectations for online activities and Chromebook use. In other words, what does Paw Power look like online? And how do we show Paw Power when we're using a Chromebook? The newly added column is highlighted in orange in this slide. We finalized this document in January 2024, and the updated matrix will be added to our 2024-2025 school handbook. Digital citizenship education is an ongoing process. An analysis of our most recent SWISS data shows that there have been improvements, and the number of technology-related referrals have decreased. There is more work to be done. As our students grow and technology evolves, their understanding and skills need to be continually updated. We look forward to continuing this important work throughout the remainder of the school year and beyond. Thank you. At this time, we would like to recognize and honor our 2024 Chabot Student of the Year and our Parent Volunteer of the Year. Annalise, can you come up here? The Governance Team, along with Chabot Elementary School, are proud to honor Annalise Sherlock as an outstanding student. Annalise Sherlock is an inspiration and has a natural ability to motivate others and is a great role model to those around her. She embodies, she truly embodies Chabot Paw Power in ways too numerous to count. During her time at Chabot, Ani is consistently showing perseverance, dedication, and determination in the classroom, at recess, and in her extracurricular activities. She puts her whole heart into all tasks before her, and she never backs down from a challenge. Ani has an amazing work ethic. She does not know the meaning of the words "give up." She works diligently to achieve her goals and is always willing to help others when needed. Ani leads by example. Her strength of character shines through in all her roles as a student, student council member, athlete, performer, sister, and friend. There are great things ahead for Annalise. The Governance Team, along with Chabot Elementary School, are proud to honor Annalise Sherlock as an outstanding student.
Annalisa, if you want to introduce your parents or anyone else out there? Am I messing this up? Am I doing? I'm doing it right. Come on back, Annalisa. You can go to the microphone if you just want to say hey to anyone out, making any shout-outs to the audience. Well, is there anyone special in the audience tonight?
Teacher, and Miss Emanuel, and my family, and Dr. Hosseini.
Very good. Well, I'm going to give you a look, very good. We didn't forget. Well, I'm going to give you a little Paw Power from the podium, okay? Congratulations.
I'm sorry, Luanek could join me up here. So, the Governance Team, along with Chabot Elementary School, are proud to honor Angelina Luanek. Angelina has been a dedicated parent volunteer since her children started school at Chabot. Throughout the years, she has supported our school in different capacities and in so many events. From serving on the Chabot Parents Club Executive Board and supporting all of the parent club activities, to helping as a room parent, to coordinating staff luncheons, Angelina goes above and beyond to support the Chabot community, and she is always ready to lend a hand where help is needed. We thank Angelina for everything she has done for our students and for our school, and we will miss her at Chabot, but we'll probably be very happy to have you at one of our conferences. The Governance Team, along with Chabot Elementary School, are proud to honor Angelina Luanek as our outstanding volunteer.
I don't have, well, I have, of course, all these special people here from Chabot and the board, of course, you guys. My husband is off on a business trip, but anyways, I'm just so happy to receive this. I'm so excited about this accolade, and I just want to thank all of you, all of you. This is just, it's just my way of giving back to the amazing staff at Chabot and in the district. So it's just a little piece of me. My love language, since it's Valentine's Day, my love language is service, is acts of service. So much love to the Chabot community. You still might see me. But, so yeah, just my way of giving back. So all that you guys do, you guys shape, shape our kids. And so with passion, and I see it firsthand when I'm in the school. So, thank you. Thanks.
So now it's time, we do make some board comments, but if we have questions, I think we should ask those questions first, correct? I do have one question for Dr. Hosseini. It's kind of a question and a half. So I, thank you very much for your presentation. I was just curious to know, are you seeing a tapering of Chromebook use since the pandemic coming back? Are, or is it, are they still really integrated into lessons and how the kids are using them?
They are. They are a part of our daily instructional activities. They're used differently depending on the grade level and the needs and the assignments. They are being used on a daily basis.
And one thing I would just note was missing is like, don't lose your Chromebook charger, because, yeah. You know my two boys, yeah. I don't know how many we've lost, so again, I really liked the presentation, but thank you. Student Board Member, Indiana Chilton.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I think digital citizenship is really important. There's so much we can do with technology in school and even social media, but I think that it's very easily used in the wrong way, especially with kids who don't know any better. And I've never really had any education like that in elementary school, so I think it's really important that you guys are doing that now. Especially with even just the, like, learning, what source is reliable or not. Like, we did a lot of that in freshman year, and it definitely helps, like, moving on to high school and I know college too, so I think that's really important. And also, congratulations to Annalise and Angelina.
Trustee Raymond.
There are no real questions, but I also, I really appreciate that you came and talked about digital citizenship tonight. I know when my boys were at Van Nuys, and it wasn't that long ago, you know, the only way for them to, like, be instructed in digital citizenship, other than us trying to do it at home, was there like an after-school activity course, like, three sessions, you know, after school for third graders or something like that, which was great, you know, it was good to have. But it's nice to see that it's become so ingrained, because obviously, this isn't going away, you know? And the responsibility, I think, that we have to, you know, raise good citizens in general includes the responsibility to make sure that our kids know how to comport themselves online. So I'm glad to see it being woven so deeply into just the basic framework of your school, so I appreciate that. And also, congratulations again to Angelina and to Annalise.
Trustee Whitaker.
I love how you do a play on words and make it fun for the kids. I mean, I want to wear wacky socks. Can we wear wacky socks? It's so much fun. So I just really appreciate the way that you're engaging the kids, because, you know, it's hard to learn sometimes, but when we have a mnemonic device that we can remember, and it's just really great. And thank you so much for doing that. And congratulations again, Annalise and Angelina, for all your hard work.
Trustee Howard.
Well, thanks for the description of your program there. I think it's really terrific, especially to get an early start on that, because social media and computers pervade our lives now. We can't get away from it. And I think, you know, I really liked a lot of the things that you had there. I think Sarah sort of alluded to this, you know, that this would be many of these things, you know, like the tech use policy, you know, common sense media, you know, remembering your wacky socks, that you have a digital footprint that stays with you forever out there. I don't think many students really appreciate how long their comments can stay online. And just the idea of responsibility and respect and empathy. And those are the things maybe we all should take those lessons, and certainly would help the level of civil discourse in the country, I think, if we were to do that, especially the empathy and respect. So thanks very much, and congratulations to Annalise and Angelina.
Vice President Adams.
Thank you. So Chabot Elementary, that's the place where I got the best picture that I think I've ever had of my, when I did this for the school board, it was at Chabot. So, I mean, it just happened to be there, but I'm, it makes me think of Chabot each time. Your program on digital citizenship is very important. I think the key word I brought, or a key phrase that I took out of that was having a positive digital citizenship. So that's a little bit about what Gary said here about the history, that it stays with you, but you want to just make sure that whatever you're posting online is positive and not some negative thing that somebody could bring up much later on. So, great on that program. And then, of course, I want to congratulate Annalise and Angelina. Thank you so much for being great citizens and for helping out the schools.
Superintendent Ahmadine.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, not to repeat, but as we look at AI, right? All the skills that you're talking about are applicable in all of the different technologies that come our way. And so important, and I just, I love the same thing you heard. I love how creative the spirit days, using different things to remind them. That's pretty cool. That's awesome. And we need, and like you said, I think this is something we used to think about, like, you know, our wonderful student board member said, kids wouldn't get until they get to high school, and now we really do need to take, you know, talk about it at a much earlier age because kids are using technology. So it's great. Thank you so much. Thank you to the staff, to the principal. Annalise, I love how they described you as someone who does things wholeheartedly. Like, this is, I, when I care about something and I know it's important, I'm just going to do it wholeheartedly. So, great job. Wonderful. And Angelina, thank you so much for everything you do. And I think with all the activities you have at Chabot, I can just, I appreciate the time and the energy you spend. And I just love how you said, the, the, the language that you use, that your language for love is really service. That's beautiful. And I'm sorry that we're all here for Valentine's Day without them here. So, Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to show everyone my wacky socks. I wore them today. They're from the University of Richmond, where my wife and I met, but I like that. I like how you're engaging the students that way and talking to them about their digital paw prints. Right, right. Oh. Dr. Hosseini, I just want to thank you. I know you started this principal at Chabot at a really challenging time. And you were my son's class teacher, right? And I just, it's so wonderful to see you here standing tonight and what you've brought to that community, and I just, I just want to thank you. And I love that you're doing this type of education with our, with our students. I think there's a lot of middle-aged people on social media in Castro Valley who could use this type of education as well. But thank you. I think it's very important that our students are doing this. Angelina, your words just really resonated with me. I'm seeing friends out here, people I really care about. Annalisa, I don't know you very well, but I've watched you grow, right? And every time when Chabot comes here, it's so personal. For so many people, like, elementary school, that neighborhood school really defines your community. And I want to thank you both, Angelina and Annalisa, for what you've put into that community. And we're looking forward to seeing great things from both of you. What? There's, there's a musical? Crazy. You are violating our board policy. No. Oh, yes. Just, when is?
When is the play?
When is the musical at Chabot Elementary School? It's in April, April. The two last four weeks. And what's the name of the musical? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I know, I know some people we can get some tickets from, so thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, oh, Trustee Whitaker.
I just want to ask, because, and I know you'll do this next time, but who's?
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
I'd love to hear who's here.
Yay. Thank you so much. So next, we will go to, just a few more items until we recess for a little bit. Our student board member report. Student Board Member, Indiana Chilton.
Okay, so at the elementary schools, Proctor is doing their crane recycling drive during February, and all of the cranes are going to children's hospitals. When the leadership class went to TVLC, we actually, like, all of the schools from the Tri-Valley who went also brought cranes to donate to the hospitals, so I'm pretty sure it's happening around a lot of districts in the Bay Area. At CVE, they're having a, oh, they had a Rigatoni's fundraiser on the seventh, and that was really successful for them. And they're also having a Hearts of Glow, oh, wait, that happened as well, sorry. On the night, they had a Hearts of Glow dance. And then today, they all celebrated Valentine's Day by wearing red. At Stanton, they had a Unity Assembly and also a Lunar New Year celebration on February 9th. And Marshall is starting their Cookies and Cheesecake fundraiser. Sounds good. I know, I saw it, and I was like, ooh, that sounds good. At the middle school level and the elementary school level, yesterday on February 13th, everyone celebrated Special Education Awareness Day by wearing orange. And on February 15th, that's tomorrow, at Creekside, they're having a Black History Month celebration from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's, that's at the high school. And in the sixth grade level, all of the outdoor school is officially done. And it seems like every sixth grader had a lot of fun with that. At the high school, we've been selling rose grams, and the environmental club sold succulent grams for Valentine's Day, so those all got passed out today. And then we're also starting to pass out our T-shirts. They say, "I'm Hell with Smart." And then every kid who got a 4.0 or above gets those. Spring sports have started, and we also participated in the music night along with the middle schools last Friday. That was at Canyon, and that was a very big success. Our next blood drive is coming up in March. And now that dodgeball tournament is over, we're starting a 3v3 basketball tournament that's also in March. Canyon and Creekside are going to come to the leadership class soon to see how that works, since they're going to start applying for high school classes. Um, since they're gonna start applying for high school classes. And we also, the boosters put on a crab feed two weeks ago. And they made over ten thousand dollars for that for the athletics program. So that was really successful. And then the last thing Canyon came to, eighth grade Canyon math came to the high school today to celebrate uh their annual math carnival. So they're learning about probability. So you're like supposed to make a game and then everyone gets candy. It was really fun. So, yeah, that's it.
I just want to express my concern for all those parents and guardians of the sixth graders who came back from outdoor school to decide whether they're going to do laundry or burn the clothing. Yeah, yeah. Uh, Superintendent Amadi.
That's right. Um, just a couple of things. Um, I wanted to share, and I'm hoping that everyone goes to the C-Vase or Adult School um website to see all of the amazing workshops they have for parents. Like they have one called Loving Solutions for, you know, if you have a strong-willed child and you want to learn, I, I think, and it's gonna be in person. And being in person, not only is it to give you some skills, but you get to be with other people who also are dealing with that. That, and they have this newsletter. So there's a ton of stuff they're doing at C-Vase to support parents, all sorts of workshops. Please check them out. Today they shared it at Parent Leadership um Council. And it, I was like, I don't know if other adult schools actually do this kind of work. There's a lot of great parent workshops. Um, and then next week, you're off. So hopefully you'll have a good time and resting. Um, I wanted to um say that at Parent Leadership Council, this is the, the value of people sharing. Um, one of the things I heard today was that one of our um schools, I believe it was actually Marshall, um, is doing what Stanton did because they heard from Stanton. And this is a really great concept when we think of providing just equitable access to everybody for, for everyone to have the same opportunities. Um, for example, at Stanton, when they had their walkathon, they made sure that every, they did whatever they could to raise money and make sure that every single child got a T-shirt. So that everyone feels, and everyone participated because it was during the day. So at Marshall, they're raising money to do the same thing, but also to make sure that every single child during the book fair actually gets to go and purchase books. To make sure that no one feels like, oh, I can't go because I didn't bring money. I mean, these are things that their PTAs are learning from each other, and I really appreciate that. There's always great conversation and back and forth about what are you doing um to, to kind of, you know, to improve things. So that's it. And I think um, you know, just uh another thing that's coming up is we are going to have um uh what's called the Community Conversation as a part of our work on Community Alliance about compassionate dialogue and working together and having civil discourse, which is much needed in this world. So that's it. Thank you.
With that, we're going to go into a five-minute recess. I'm gonna tell Siri five minutes on my thing and we'll, we'll be back in five minutes. Okay? Thanks. I, I just want to, uh, the school board meeting fashion report. I'm intrigued by the number of sweaters with hearts tonight. It's, it's quite impressive. Uh, it's totally cute. Um, okay, so let's go now. If we have anyone from the California School Employees Association and uh any representatives online? Uh, do we have a representative for some for the Cal, Castro Valley Teachers Association? They are not here to provide reports. Very good. Let us go to the, oh, right. Have we received public comment for items not on the agenda? We did see one, but they are not here. Very good. One came in virtually. Very good. Um, thank you. So let's go to the consent agenda. Uh, I need a motion.
I'm of approval of the consent agenda.
Fantastic. I got a one. Oh, I got a two from uh trustee Howard. Let us go to student board member Indiana Chilton.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Very good. Uh, let us go to our next item. It's a presentation about the Dual Language Immersion Program. It's an update. Dos Corazon. Those Corazon's.
Right. Good evening, board members and executive cabinet, and happy Valentine's Day. There's no place we'd rather be. Um, so we are going to present on our dual language immersion program, which supports our district vision that our students are compassionate, critical thinkers who are, yes. Who are empowered to self-advocate, explore their passions, and are prepared to thrive as contributing members of our ever-changing and diverse world. As you know, our dual language immersion program is housed at Vanoy Elementary School under the amazing leadership of Principal Bellatori. And tonight we're going to update you on some of our progress, including our partnership with Santa Clara University, uh, are some of the parent education opportunities we've had this year, and then we will end with highlighting our student voices. But first, I just want to do a quick review of our three-year DLI implementation plan. In year one, it was all about planning for the TK and kindergarten classrooms. Year two, which was last year, um, we implemented TK, the DLI TK and key uh kinder classes. It would be planned for first grade. This year, which is our third year, we have successfully rolled out our first grade DLI classes. We're currently planning for second grade while also continuing, of course, with our TK and kindergarten classes. And what our team is working on now is building a new three-year DLI implement, implementation plan. And without further ado, I'm gonna hand it off to Principal Bellatori.
He's standing in a hole. Uh, buenas noches, pero se sienten como, si, buenas noches. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I am very passionate about this topic. I'm sure you all know that it feels like it was just yesterday that we're talking about this idea of a dual immersion program. Um, and it's here. It's just, it's an amazing thing to see. Um, as of some of you have come already through, our kids are just so excited to read. They're just already, and it's been two years and they're reading in Spanish. And our little ones who are native Spanish speakers who didn't know how to read but were able to speak have such pride that they're sharing something about their future and to be able to. So I did write little notes because Abby did say it was only 10 minutes. But I could talk about this into the night, but I'm sure everyone else has plans. So. So currently, um, we have a TK class, two kinders, and two first grade classrooms. And next year, we're adding the second grade. Very excited. We are looking for two additional second grade teachers. Um, I am excited for people who are applying. So if you know, please spread the word. La palabra tiene que seguir. So spread the word out there. Um, we have had already our informational nights. Um, very well attended. We have a lot of interest. We got interest from the, as soon as we started the school year, of people inquiring how they could get their child into the DLI program. So we had um two meetings. And one of the things you're gonna see through the presentation is whenever we have meetings, we do two. Uno en español, for native Spanish speakers, and one in English, which is very, very important to have, because our program is español. Um, so here you just have information. We had our two, they were beginning of the year. And information flyer, we update that every year. Um, so our parents have the most recent information about our program. So now it's like, okay. We will continue to add in TK and K. So as we move up each grade level, our kids are moving up. So we are. Um, we have in our planning, our advisory committee, um, we meet biannually. We did do it more frequently when we were just starting the program. But it's a great opportunity to get feedback and hear from within our community what we can do to improve our program. We also have a planning team meeting, which is with um Ed Services Support. Um, and also we have a, oh, our amazing Vanoy team. Um, I'm just gonna brag a little bit right now because we have um a, uh, our school psychologist is bilingual. Our speech teacher is bilingual. Our RTI specialist is bilingual. Our RSP teacher is bilingual. Um, it is just amazing to be able to have that. Um, so just a little bit of that. So some of our team members are able to join us. For our planning team, we meet weekly or every other week. Um, and we also have a partnership with Santa Clara University. Um, so we're continuing to have that. We currently have some teachers within the district that are working on a B-Cloud. Very exciting. And so you need to have a B-Cloud certification to teach um in Spanish. All right. Uh, a very big thank you to um Amy, who has updated our district website. So it's a great source for anyone who's interested in the program. It's kept updated with any information. So if anyone out there is interested in the program, I would recommend that you visit the website that has really good information about how to um enroll your child or just apply for the program. The big piece that we have that we continue, which is a live document, is our frequently asked question. So we get a lot of questions where families like, well, what if this or that, or how do I um start the process? So we have it in Spanish and also simplified Chinese. So every time we have a meeting, if there's any new frequently asked questions, we add it to it. So families can go to it and it is live on our, our district. Um, we partnered this year with the adult school. They are amazing. Um, one of the things we wanted to make sure with the program is, yes, we're supporting our students, but how do we support our families? Um, and it's not just our English-speaking families, but how do you support your children who already speak Spanish through the program? So it's important to, we have two um English-only and then we have our Spanish-only families. So how do we support them? Because their needs might be there. So in partnership with the adult school, we did a survey at the beginning of the year. We have one hundred twenty-five students, seventy-two families responded back. And from that information, and we did the survey in English and in español, we received information. So here you could see um the difference. So parents were able to pick their first choice, their second choice, their third choice. And all of that information, we had it up, reminded our parents, but they continued, people wanted to give us their feedback on it. So some of the information that we received from it is their first and second choice. Because we couldn't do everything all at once. So he said, what is the biggest piece that is really the first choice that they're? And it was an introductory, introductory Spanish class for parents. Um, so families speak English, but how do I support my child? I want to be able to start having some communication. It was well-attended. We already had it. Um, we had two classes, um, and that was through the adults. So um amazing teacher, uh, Gigi through the adult school came and had um the class for our parents. And then from there, parents want to know, how can we support our child? And that could be in English. How do I support if I don't speak Spanish? But then also, how do I support my child? We do speak Spanish, but what else do I need to provide? So we do have um an upcoming workshop coming up at the end of the month, provided by our RTI specialist. So she'll have, again, two classes, uno en español and one in. Then we also have language, uh, language acquisition, um, and then reading, language arts and math. So the language acquisition presentation is gonna be put on by Dr. Mendoza, um professor through. So the language acquisition presentation is going to be put on by Dr. Mendoza, professor through University of Santa Clara. And she will be doing that in March. Again, we'll have the two different. And then reading, language arts is going to be addressed by our RTI specialist, and then we're going to, we're planning on having math later on. All right. So how do you enroll your children in this program? So we are currently still taking the application. So there's two processes. They have to do the enrollment, but they also have to do an application. Application is both in English and Spanish. That priority enrollment is coming to an end this coming week. We want to really make sure that we get the word out to our Spanish speaking families. We are continuing to do the 50/50. So 50% of our students are English speaking, 50% Spanish speaking. It's very hard to get our Spanish speaking families and get the word out. So it's very important that within our community, it said pasar la voz. Passing the word amongst our community to make sure, so if you know of any, please pasar la voz. So just more information right here of the process of how we go ahead and fill the seats. And currently, right now, we do have beyond the seats available. So it looks like that we most likely will have a lottery that's very similar to the most. And then in April, we'll have, we'll send out the acceptance or waitlist information to our family. And then we will have a fiesta. You're all welcome to attend. That will be in May, and that's when we're going to have our DLI orientation and celebration. So last year, it was very well attended, and this year it will be hopefully a bigger group, because now we've added more children to the program. So. All right. And just more information. Again, I just said that we're accepting TK and kindergarten students. And just on a little bit of an update on our secondary, we're continuing to work on this, because these little guys are going to be in middle school before we know it. We're talking about it a few years ago, how we're going to start the program. It's going to be like that before. We're going to blink, and it's already, they're going to be in middle. So we have talked about potential subjects that are going to be in español, so social, social science, science, Spanish for Spanish speakers, heritage speakers, and then the high school AP classes. A really exciting thing is that the community, as we've mentioned before, the DLI community is so welcoming wherever we go. I know Board Member Howard gave us that great information connection. People continue to be, are willing to help us out. We just reach out and they say, how can we help you? Would you like to come visit? So we are going to be visiting some middle schools and high school to just kind of get more information about what do we need to start doing now, so that we're ready for our littles when they're about to head off. And then just next steps, we're preparing for second grade, so hiring. We're actually in the process right now, looking at the curriculum, because we need to have that information now, so that we're ready to go for our second graders as they move on. Continuing to offer parent education classes. So I think in total, we probably have about six offerings. So that's quite a bit. And that went off of the survey that we sent out. Families have already even signed up for Spanish classes through the adult school too. So they've continued. So they did that introduction. They're like, oh no, this is great. So they actually signed up to for the adult school. And then again, just our big celebration on May 18th. We'd love to have you there. We'll start at nine o'clock, and it's a really great event. And then just wanted to end with a little bit of videos. And these are our students. Our first student is a student in kindergarten with their second year. Well, as you could see here, she's actually reading along to a narrative that they wrote. And so this is her, her second year. Oh, there it is.
While we're trying to. To get that done, I have to tell you, it's like one of my most favorite things to do is to walk through the dual immersion classes. The kids are adorable and they, they speak in Spanish back to you, back and forth to each other. It's just beautiful.
And this is a student who is in English. So native English. You could see the accent already, and that's her second year. And this is a native Spanish speaker also. You could just see how proud they are just to share what they can do. And this next video is of our first grader. So they've been in the program for two years. And they're just going to share, one is learning Spanish and one is her, Spanish is her first.
I can speak English and Spanish and French, just some more.
Muy bien. Sajal, ¿qué idiomas puedes hablar? Very good. Very good. That's wonderful. All right. Thank you so much. But they're so proud. They're just so proud to be able to speak Spanish. And I mean, to say that, you speak three languages. I mean, that's amazing. I'm a Mac user, sorry. So any questions that you might have regarding our DLI program? Thank you so much for letting me share today.
I've got questions, but I'll defer to my other board members first to see if they have questions. You have a comment. Should we go with comments? And then, okay, make a comment. Yeah, yeah. Let's do it.
So I just, I really like the commitment that you are putting into partnering with like the adult school in order to make sure that the families know how to support kids in this environment. I know I've heard some feedback, you know, from parents who wanted their kids in the program, where the other parent may have been like, well, I don't speak any Spanish. So how can I, how can we possibly put our kid in a class like this? And I think it's great that this, that systems are being put in place to sort of address that head on and to support the families in feeling like they can in fact participate in a child schooling, even if they may not be able to speak the language. And in some ways, honestly, that may be a very good lesson for people in general. Because goodness knows, there are native speakers going to school whose parents may not be able to engage, you know, in the education. If the education is all in English. So I think it's really a great way to instill some just like cultural familiarity with what that might be like, you know, for kids from a very young age. Thank you for doing that. And thank you for taking the time to do the surveying and figure out exactly what would be helpful, rather than making assumptions.
Trustee Whitaker.
I just want to say, you know, we, this was an idea, right? Not too long ago, and you and your team have implemented it in a way where we're starting to see the results. We're starting to see the fruits of all of your trabajo. And I just want to say, you know, I look forward to what we're going to continue to do and how we might learn from this and think about, you know, potentially other things, but just, it's so lovely to see what you've done. Thank you so much.
Trust, Vice President Adams.
I just want to say, DLI is just great, and I think that, and what you're doing with it, both of you is really wonderful. And it's terrific that it's competitive for people to get in there. So the whole value of speaking Spanish is elevated in the entire district.
Okay, I have a few questions. Okay. I was curious about sort of demographically balancing those classes. I think it's fantastic that we are bringing children who are speaking Spanish at home into it. How are we ensuring that demographically, though, it kind of mirrors overall the, our district profile, right? Maybe from households where kids are not speaking English as their first language, but maybe another language, for example. How's that playing out? I'm curious.
Families are able, so what we do is, it's almost like you're having to, right? So you look, you have to do the 50% in Spanish. So we actually do an assessment. So just to say like, hey, completely bilingual in Spanish, well, I can take the word for it, but we need to find out if they can. So we do an assessment, not currently happening right, happening right now. So we're making sure that our students, they're not, and they're welcome to be in the, you know, in the lot. So it is a lottery option that's open. Doesn't matter if they speak Spanish. So it's not, hey, I only speak, you know, this language and my limited, or I speak multiple. It's open to them. So we want to make sure that we look at the demographic and making sure that it's equitable.
And as you're walking up to the bike, oh, well, maybe you were going to say what I'm going to say. So you say it.
Yeah. So some we've been really intentional about, because what you'll find is that we have the waitlist of the, you know, and we really want to. So we've done some really intentional outreach this year. We've gone to churches, we've gone to preschool. We went to Rancho Mercado, where like we are really trying to build relationships in different areas to recruit different, different kids, right? A diverse group. And additionally, Tilsia, who's amazing, at the food distribution passes out the flyers. And so we're really trying to pull from a wide range.
Trustee Howard.
Well, it's a great program. I'm glad you're doing it. I think it's terrific, and I'm really glad those little students are learning Spanish. But we've talked about this a lot over the last few years, and I think as great as this program is, it's only part of the solution, right? Because it's only a small slice of our students. And the ultimate goal is for every student to graduate from Castro Valley Unified, fluent and reasonably fluent in two languages, one of which we hope, of course, is English, but the other one is something else. And so, you know, even though this program's doing great, I think we need to think hard about ways that we can expand. It's sort of, this is an intense, expensive program. Is there another way that we can do something else that's at least a partial solution? And, you know, there are a few other things we can think about. But I just want to encourage all of us to try to think hard about that. And it's a great, it's a tough problem. Anyway, thanks so much for all the work that you guys are doing. It's great.
Yeah. That's one of the things that we're trying to kind of see what the possibilities are for anything else, whether it be, is it, because the goal is to have it, you know, during school, but there's only so much time. So we're going to come to you with some information for you to consider and kind of think about. But it's amazing. What I, what I love is the fact that our dual immersion, Spanish dual immersion is not just in elementary school. It's going to go all the way to 12th grade. And that thoughtful process that you're going through to make it happen is what's key. Because a lot of times people start in, and then it just stops. It just stops.
So I have more questions, but I do appreciate trustee Howard's comment and also Superintendent Amadi's comment. I remember the first time I went to Germany as a, just finished my ninth grade year, one year of German, no, two years of German, I'd done it in eighth grade. Just being so jealous of my host brother, who had been learning another language since like the second or third grade. My son Teddy still texts with, we had an exchange student way back in the day, and her daughter is the same age as Teddy now, and they still text, but she's been learning. She does it to practice English with Teddy. She's in Berlin, and she was, she started in third grade, like, so I kind of, I love that we're doing this, and I'm sitting here thinking, okay, how can we just move the bar down? How can we get to seventh grade, sixth grade, fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, right? But I also appreciate how the DLI program, I think, is also just bringing a different cohort of students and really uplifting a cohort of students that needs to be uplifted at the same time. With regards to planning the curriculum out through middle school and high school, are we saying that all the kids will go to Canyon? Or are we all, are we planning just for them to go to Canyon, or would they go to either middle school?
They all feed into Canyon.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Yeah, thank you. That was my only other question. And, oh, oh, trustee, sorry, student board member Indiana Chilton.
Um, I just wanted to say, I like, I agree with everyone. I think it's super important, and especially like at such a young age, I feel like students soak up a language so much faster, even at the high school level. I mean, the first video you played, like, that's stuff that I was learning two years ago. So I would have loved to be learning a language from so young. And I just think it's also gives students a really good opportunity to, if the program grows more and like, more through the middle school, if students reach a certain level of fluency, like they can get to the high school and do another language, like they could do sign language or Japanese. And I feel like that just gives students a way better opportunity to graduate and be fluent in English and like possibly even to other languages. And yeah, I just think it's really good that it's starting at such a young age.
Just, just a couple of things. Was it two nights ago when we had our data, right? And we looked at the English proficient kids who are, whose English is second language, whether it be the initial FAP or re-designated, we're doing much better in reading, language arts. That is, if there is not, I mean, there is the result, right? And just thinking about how, not only that, but that pride that you see in kids who speak a second language. I don't get to do that much here, but when I do, I love it. It just feels so good that I can speak a different language as a, as someone who's bilingual. It's just, it gives you this feeling that, hey, I can actually do something more. So it's just, it's kind of, it's a different kind of feeling, I think, than you have. But I want to, and this presentation, I want to thank Nia, Ms. Rashichi, for her incredible, incredible leadership making this happen, and Doris Delatory, because you have to have people like them that started three years ago. And of course, we are so lucky to have Afi, because she's just phenomenal. We've got an amazing team. It's a lot of work behind the scene and just handing it off. And the fact that you can hand it off to Afi and Doris and know that it's going to happen. I just want to thank you, because I've seen, I've been in places where we start dual immersion and it doesn't go like this. So thank you so much.
And every time, Mrs. Delatory, when you come here, I just imagine you as a little girl going to that library, getting those books. And it's so heartening to me how personal this is for you and how it's, how it's you. It's, it's, it's your cortisol. Thank you for being here tonight. Our next item is the mid-year update for the 2023-24 Local Control Accountability Plan, also known as the LCAP. Love this presentation. Loving it.
Okay, so good evening, board members and cabinet members and everybody out in the audience. We, I, my name is Nia Rashichi. I am the Assistant Super Ed Services and super happy to be presenting tonight on something that's new from the state this year. And it's a 2324 LCAP mid-year report. So the state said, you know what, you gotta, we gotta report before the end of the year. And so this is new for all school districts in the state of California. So we're doing something new this evening. Just a few reminders about the purpose of the LCAP. So the LCAP, it really represents the district-wide plan of action around continuous improvement. And it's focused on, like, it gives our overall guidance for the programs that we have in Castro Valley. The focus is a laid-like focus on ensuring. The focus is a laid-like focus on hot, ensuring high achievement. And, um, the state is really interested in making sure that school districts have local control and that they're also very transparent and accountable for the way that funding is used on the different programs in the district. So that's the overall purpose of the, um, LCAP. And so what are we going to do tonight? We're going to look at a little data, some of the data you've seen before, um, some, there will be some new data points. And we'll talk about some of the actions that fall under the four goals in the LCAP. And we'll discuss some of the responses to the data that you'll see. And then, um, we'll share our current expenditures year-to-date. Um, and then finally, we'll just answer any questions that you might have about it. So let's jump into the goals. Four goals, teaching and learning, facilities, credentials and instructional materials, parent empowerment or parent engagement, and then positive safe learning environment. How are our students engaged and, um, supported from a social, emotional behavioral standpoint? So those are our four goals. Um, we'll stick with those goals. Um, they've been the same goals that we've had over the last couple of years. And then in goal number one, we've got sixteen actions. And it's the biggest piece of, um, where we have most of our actions as far as our, um, goals are concerned. Um, the rest of, of the other three goals are really, um, they have just a few, um, actions under each. So I won't go through all these because we'd be here all night. But I will talk about multi-tiered systems of support. So what we're talking about there, you all have heard this, it's about educators collaborating around data to make informed decisions about tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three instruction, intervention, acceleration. Um, and our teachers work really, our teachers and our principals work really hard to make sure that those systems are in place so that we, um, have very strong first instruction and/or if a student doesn't get it the first time, they have some additional support to get it the second or third time. I'll go down to one point four, and I'm, regards to our English learners. And, um, we just had, um, our DLI program, but really, we're talking about our multi-language, multilingual language learners and what is all the supports that we need to do to make sure that they do learn English, become more proficient in English, and they learn the content at the same time. So we talk about integrated and designated ELD. I'll move over to, let's say, professional development, because that's a big chunk of the work that we do in teaching and learning. How do we build the capacity of the people, of the adults in our system in order to really make sure that all of these actions can actually take place? Um, we do a lot of professional development in the, in the district. From, uh, you can talk about, um, RTI, our response to intervention. You can talk about our equity work, our interrupting implicit bias, our anti-bias and anti-racist work, um, our work around equitable grading practices. All of those areas need professional learning, building the capacity of adults to actually carry out the work that we're asking them to do. So those are just some of the examples in the actions under teaching and learning. Um, and then let's jump to some data. You have seen the SBACK data, um, this year, we did a whole presentation on, on it. And in, for English Language Arts, for our students, um, who have met and exceeded standard, um, you really see here, we've kind of like, kind of flat, um, and/or we've reduced a little bit, slightly, um, gone down, um, across. But what we're, what we're really seeing is, um, some areas, we, we will continue to have, um, students, um, make progress, but we have some work to do here. Um, we're, uh, we're not where we want to be. But as far as the local districts, we, we really actually do, um, compete really well. So more work to do. We want to see all of these at ninety percent and above. But as far as right now, um, overall, we're at sixty-seven percent. And then we still see that achievement gap. You can look at our Hispanic Latino students and our Black and African-American students and know that there's, that's the, the visual gap that we're talking about when we're talking about achievement gap. So folks are working hard. There's still work to be done. With math, again, we had some growth. But again, our math, uh, overall percentages of met and exceeded don't live up to our English Language Arts, um, current percentages. So we, if you remember the, when we did the presentation on SBACK, we had a whole bunch of work that we were doing, and we'll, we'll kind of revisit what we're doing about, um, the data. So A through G completion rates, um, these are A through G, um, courses, um, are the courses that must be taken in high school in order to, um, go to CSUs or UCs. And the grades have to be a C, you have to get a C or above in each of those courses in order to, um, qualify to go to CSUs and USC's. And in order, for, overall, we're doing pretty darn well, um, with our completion rates. They're going in the right direction. If you look at the three years of data, um, we will continue to work on. But also, we're working on closing that gap. You can see that the gap is closing between our overall and our African-Americans, uh, students. But in each of the, the data points for the last three years, if you think about, well, sorry, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, we are continuing to see growth. And so far, um, we'll see what twenty-three, twenty-four carries out for us. Reclassification rates and long-term English learner rates. So there's two data sets on here. The reclassification rates, um, are the rates that, how, how do we reclassify our student, our English learners to being, um, English proficient? Right now, you'll see for the last three years, um, our reclassification rates have gone down. But happy to report that as of now, for this school year, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, we're at twenty percent as far as our reclassification rate. So we are on the, um, on the right track for this year. Our long-term English learner rate is also on the right track because we want to see that number go down. We want to make sure that we're reclassifying our English learners to fully English proficient at earlier stages. So we want to see that number go down. Um, so we're working on it. Um, as far as CTE completers, um, these are our career technical education, um, students who are, um, completing those, um, pathways, uh, for career technical education. We have auto pathways, we have photography, we have, um, engineering, graphic design. Those are all different pathways. And so these are our, um, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and we'll have twenty-three, twenty-four, um, information a little bit later in the school year, but this is where we are right now. Okay, so, goal two, facilities, credentials and instructional materials. I'm going to hand this particular one off to my colleagues, Ms. Suzie Chan and Dr. Samara.
Thank you. Um, so for goal two, um, what our description that we, we have in our LCAP is to ensure a positive learning environment with properly certified teachers, adequate materials and appropriate, appropriate facilities to support high-quality teachers and student learning. So how do we do that? How do we, um, make sure that we are, um, supporting our students and, 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 um, meeting the goals that, that, that we set? So as you can see here, we have a two-point-one, two-point-two, and two-point-three that are listed in the previous slide. So for each classroom, um, this is in terms of, of technology. So we have, um, a, um, we, we review on a regular basis, uh, to make sure that we are, um, in compliance and with technology, um, uh, standards. Uh, what, how we do that is we have a, a health ticket system, uh, that address, uh, any ongoing, uh, maintenance, uh, repair and support that, uh, students, um, uh, and staff, uh, need throughout the year. We also, a review on a regular basis, the, um, and, uh, the bandwidth, right? So, so, um, uh, we, this year, we've increased our bandwidth and, and we do have plans just because our, our devices, right, we, we have a lot more, um, uh, each year. And so we're, we're looking at, um, um, increasing the bandwidth, uh, for, for next year. That's going to be included in our, um, the upcoming LCAP, as I know, um, uh, we are, uh, now working on. And, uh, for the facilities department, uh, same thing, uh, look, looking at and working with school sites uh, throughout, uh, the district, just to, um, ensure that we have, we are, uh, consistently just checking the facility's needs. We've done Measure G, a lot of Measure G work, uh, upgraded our, our facilities, mo- modernization and all of that. But, uh, work is not done. We continue to, to, to do that. And making sure that there's funding, um, that, that covers, uh, those needs. And, um, engineering, classroom and, and student wellness for, uh, that we're, we are very proud of. They're, uh, both, uh, occupied and, uh, fully, uh, utilized. In terms of the maintenance and operations, we do have the facilities inspection tool that we use. And so, um, this is really helpful for, for, um, the department to really take a look at and assess the needs, uh, of our, uh, of our classrooms and, and on, uh, facilities. Uh, we also make sure that we have adequate staffing. I know that, um, we have, we have challenges. And it's not just Castro Valley, it's, 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 it's in California, right? So it's in terms of staffing shortage, but we make sure that we, we bring in substitutes if we have staff that are out, um, uh, to make sure that there, uh, there's ongoing support. And, and, and our, our classrooms are clean for our students and, and, um, because we are, uh, we, we be very, uh, we are very, well, um, we want to make sure that their health and safety is, 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 uh, a priority for us. And then I'm going to run it over to, for Samara.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. So this is a first for Castro Valley, as well as a first for me in my sixteenth year in this field, where we've only had one misassignment, uh, for the teacher credential, and that was actually an agency error. In my experience with even neighboring school districts, I've never seen a school district come down to at least one misassignment or anywhere below fifteen. And we're very fortunate with the collaboration with our school sites, with the school, uh, principals, as well as ed services and business services. We've been able to collaborate and figure out where do we need to fix the credential misassignments. The, the other challenge is that this is last year's data that CTC reports to us that wants us to go back in time to fix it. If I ever find the trick to that, I'll let you know, and we'll sell it for millions of dollars. But this is an exciting moment in our time that we were able to make sure that we have credential-qualified teachers assigned correctly here in Castro Valley Unified.
Okay, so then we go to goal three, parent empowerment, parent engagement. And we do a fantastic job with our parent engagement. So far, um, for, we did the California Healthy Kids Survey this year, and we have had a seventeen percent increase in the number of parents who participated. And so we'll bring that data forward, um, once we, um, get the results and are able to, um, assess how we're, uh, what, what the results said. We continue to work really hard with our African-American, uh, parent advisory committees, our D-LAG, our Partos Unidos, our Parent Leadership Council. Something new this year is that we're using Thought Exchange as a new tool to collect community feedback. So for our LCAP, um, for our new LCAP process, um, we are already out there with question one, two, and four, um, asking for feedback from our community about how we're doing, um, what's working and where are areas of growth. So that's a new tool that Ms. Amy Kair, thank God for her, um, has really helped us to, you know, put, uh, put out there to the community and really make sure that we're getting more solid feedback. Because we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to give feedback, and this seems to be a tool to help with that. We also, um, always do as much translation as we possibly can to make sure that our parents can understand the different materials that we're putting out. And we have a comprehensive, um, list of things that we do for our homeless families to make sure that they are supported and, and fully participate in our schools. Um, and as far as, um, positive safe learning environment, goal four. So here's some data that I think we'll be excited about. So with our attendance rate, so with our attendance rate, you can see that, um, the, if y'all remember the pandemic, we had, uh, you know, we had some tough times there. And the attendance that we had to do when we came back to school in twenty-one, twenty-two, there, you can see a dip there in twenty-one, twenty-two. And folks, we were kind of doing the balance of, we want you to stay home. We don't want to, you know, uh, spread COVID in, uh, in the schoolrooms while we're in the school, and physically in, in, um, classrooms. And then the last year, twenty-two, twenty-three, you can see, you know, there's a comeback. We got attendance coming back to, um, the nineties, um, except for our foster, um, youth, where that's really only about eight students, and that can be very variable when you have such a small number. But everybody else is, um, at ninety or above. And, um, uh, according to, um, what, what Mr. McMaster and I have talked about, we're continuing that trend for the, for the current school year. So, um, more good news there. Um, as far as chronic absenteeism, and this is one of those, um, data points that you want to see reducing, right? Um, so just a definition of chronic absenteeism is when a student is absent for any reason for ten percent or more of the days that they are enrolled in school. So, um, you can see that, again, we want that number to be going down. Um, and that is the trend that you see for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And a, a proud moment that many of our school, uh, many of our schools, um, last year were qualified for what they call ATSI. And, um, basically, it was around chronic absenteeism. We had student groups, um, at almost every one of our schools that were in what they called the red zone. And through hard work, planning, talking to staff and definitely, and working with our parents and really understanding like, okay, so now we're starting to like rebuild. We want you to come to school and that careful balance of if you're not feeling well, yeah. But, um, don't, you know, don't come to school. But we, when you can, we definitely want you here, kind of getting back into that groove. Um, and so, um, our, um, all of our schools, except for four, all jumped out of that status, um, ATSI status, um, which is, uh, you know, it's a big statement. And as a district, from a district-wide perspective, we were in, put into differentiated assistance last year. And over one year, again, concentrated effort at the school sites, we are out of differentiated assistance. So, um, so the, the, the work, you know, if it's targeted and really, you know, pen points, like, here's what we need to do to make sure that, um, our students aren't chronic, aren't chronically absent, we can have improvements, um, as long as we focus on it. Suspension rates. So now, one of the things that you will see is that we had an uptick twenty-two, twenty-three. And that was a statewide trend. And we actually were better than statewide trend, not saying that it's, it's good to have, uh, suspensions that, um, have gone up. But we were at two-point-six percent of our students, and at the statewide level, they were at three-five, two-point-five percent. So, um, what's great is there are a couple of, um, good, um, areas that we've really done some reductions in. So around, um, there's, uh, been a decline in suspensions revolving around violence and threats of violence. And we continue to work on, um, you know, how do we, um, prevent things from happening? So that student, that we don't have to get to a place where we're talking about that type of discipline. So we work on our restorative practices, we work on education-based approaches that really can, um, work well, um, when, um, when we're working closely with students. Our expulsion rate is zero, which is great. That's where we want it to be. Um, and our graduation cohort rate, um, we have some good numbers. You see that every group except for our students with disabilities is over ninety percent. Um, and so we're continuing to see that, um, climb and improvement in the twenty-two, twenty-three, um, data. So we've got some areas that we're, uh, we've got to grow in, and we've got some areas of success that we want to keep growing in. So areas of focus, our three areas of focus continue to be the same areas that have been our equity, multi-tiered systems of support, and building capacity. We did a, uh, a data, uh, data, uh, study session the other night, and we talked about our data walks and talks, um, and how, um, district office staff administration is working with, um, the site-level administration to really, basically walk across classrooms together, have conversations, sit down, look at data together, talk about what's working, what's not working, and how do we support? That's the biggest, like, how do we sport to move academic, uh, social, emotional behavioral needle forward? Our overall theme for this school year has been, how do we create more welcoming, inclusive, and equitable spaces? How many, how do we create more wise spaces in the district? And, um, that's a work, a piece of work that we will continue into the, the next school year. Multi-tiered systems of support, I won't go through every one of these, but I will, I think it's really important to hit on building capacity right now. We do a ton of professional development, and, um, that professional development helps us to make sure that our multi-tiered systems of support are actually working so that we can actually have the results of equity, meaning all students get what they need when they need it, and that those needs are and can be and will be different. And to develop the capacity of people to meet those differences is what we really work towards in a variety of different areas. So math supports, we know, we saw the math scores in our CAS, we've got work to do there. Um, we have an amazing secondary, um, math TOSA that is doing some really good work with our teachers, um, to hone that skill. And we were, uh, we are working to do that at the elementary level as well. Additional supports, again, um, we have lots of teacher leadership opportunities in the district. We think that teacher, teacher leadership is extremely important. So we have our wise leads, our EL mentors, our EL data, um, teacher leaders, and they do a lot of work. They, they, we're developing their capacity at meetings, um, at the district office. And then they have, uh, basically assignments that they go back. They are in the staff meetings, and they do development of the rest of their staffs in the different areas that we've said are the most important things that we're doing in the district. Continuing to partner with PlayCV to align what's happening in after-school programs with the during the day. Um, we do that work on a regular basis. Again, you've heard a lot about our standards-based equitable rating practices and the professional development around that and the building systems. You've also heard about our cost processes as far, as part of our multi-tiered systems of support. Um, and our social workers and our mental health counselors, thank goodness for them. Through thick and thin, they work really hard, but supporting our students through that social, emotional behavioral piece is incredibly important. And it helps us to then impact the academic side of the house. So those are additional supports. I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Suzy Chan for explanation.
Thank you. So we have also wanted to give you an update on our expenditures. So the budget for, for the goals that you see there from goal one, three, and four, we have a total budget of $7.3 million. So just a reminder, this is additional money that we are get, that we actually receive as part of our local control funding formula. The, it's a 20% additional funding, which is on top of the base grant that we get. So the, the students that generate these dollars, it's really, we are, this year, it's actually increased our percentage is at 43%. If you recall, we started a few years ago at 29, and now we're, we're up to 43%. So we are, and that's the reason why you're seeing a 7.3. We start, when, when it was about 28, 29%, we were only getting three, about $3 million. Now we're up to 7.3, 7.3 million. And so there are a lot of supports and needs and, and, and things that we're able to do because of those, because of these dollars, $7.3 million. You're not see, you don't see goal two, even though I know that we've gone through the presentation from goal one to goal four. You're not seeing goals two, because that's the, the, the dollars that we spent for goal two are not out of the supplemental, uh, the supplemental funds. So they're unrestricted general funds or other grants that we received. And that's why I did not list goal two here. It's only one, three, and four. So the budget of $7.3 million, actual expenditures to date, out of, as of January 31st, is about close to $4.1 million, and plans to spend the remaining funds until June 30th. Salaries and, and other supports that, that, that we provide to our students.
And so last but not least, next steps. So we will continue to monitor our progress for the current school year. And we've already begun work on the new three-year, 24, 25, starting in 24 to 25 LCAP. We will gather additional educational partner feedback. And one new thing that's happening this year is that sites, all of our sites will be doing local LCAP presentations, so that we think that's a better way to get more community feedback right in the communities that our families live, go to school in. We'll submit the LCAP to the Alameda County Office of Education for final review, and then as we traditionally have, agendize it for a public hearing and then final approval. And then we'll start all over again. So that is the end of the presentation, and any questions?
Uh, trustee, Vice President Adams.
Well, it looks like all of the trends, just in general, are, you know, doing better since the, well, I, I want to say dips, but sometimes it was increases of COVID. The only thing I wanted to, of course, mention is, what could we do to decrease chronic absenteeism for SWD students so that we could increase their graduation rates, so that we could increase our overall graduation rates? Because that's a, and, and that's a big, hard, difficult question, I know, because these are kids who don't test well.
So I think one thing that, you know, I think one, one of the things that we're really good at is, once we see the data like very clearly, we're able to like have conversations with teachers, families, principals, and like, okay, so really unpacking that a little bit more about like, so what is happening to when the student isn't coming to school? Because 10% is a big amount of time. And so there's all kinds of reasons why, and I'm sure for every student that happens to fall in that student group, there are a variety of reasons. So we have to really unpack the data and then have conversations with our principals and, and our teachers and our families and see how we can impact, like, what is happening with this individual family that is impacting the student actually getting to school? And those could be, those will be on a case-by-case basis with our students with disability.
Individualized, yeah. I mean, just the acronym for people at home who are watching on Valentine's Day is Students with Disability.
People are in love with school board meetings. Gary has a question.
I, I have a question, but you can have a question first.
Well, I mean, all those numbers are interesting, and you know, they're clearly, clearly worth pursuing. You know, if you think about it, the, the number of students each year that doesn't graduate is about 40. You know, it's 40 kids, 35 to 40 kids. So, you know, and part of those come out of our special needs students, because they are in that usually. So it's not a, in, in a sense, it's not a huge number, but it's a, we'd like, we'd like to get it down.
Absolutely.
And the, the attendance, of course, we've gone over that ad nauseam, of course. Every 1%, there's roughly a million dollars left on the table. So we're down at 93% or something. That's 7 million. We could double your budget on that. But the one I really wanted to ask about was, what does suspensions mean these days? We went through a big discussion about this a few years ago, and I think that I sort of got the idea here that those kids aren't in class now if they're suspended. Is that true or not?
So, yeah, when students are suspended, that means they're home. And there are certain things we have to suspend for, and there are certain things we don't. So when they have to be suspended for, we have to suspend them. But we, in other cases, I'm just, that's the, all the work that we've put in place, restorative practices to keep them at school. But basically, there are, and to be honest, like last year and right after COVID, we saw lots of misbehavior, lots of just, you know, conflict. So, yeah, they're, they're not at school when they're suspended.
Maybe I'm misremembering this, but I thought in our discussion a couple of years ago, or three years ago, or whenever it was, that we were attempting to have suspensions in school.
So it's not suspension in school. We want to keep them in school, because there are places where they suspend kids, and they're really not learning. That whole concept is actually not the right concept to say, you're suspended out of the classroom, but you're sitting in this room. It's called like the holding tent. And we've seen it. It's not effective at all. So kids need to be in the classroom. So our goal is always to suspend kids as much as possible, not suspend them, and work with them and say, there are consequences. This is what you need to do. You're, you know, the wellness center, the social workers, all of those things, so they actually stay in class instead of putting them in a room. Because I have seen in all, throughout, in, in the country, the suspension in school means that they're not in class. So what's the use for them not to? I mean, they have to be in class. So what you're, you might be referring to is the, the legislation that passed that says we don't suspend for defiance of authority. So, but, but that we don't.
Maybe I'm remembering it wrong, but this is one of those cases where if you remember those commercials, there's some commercials now and where you throw the red flag out, challenge call, and they run the camera, and you replay the play and...
I recall what we did talk about was training our teachers so that we could not disproportionately suspend. They were, the, our teachers had difference of opinion and ideas on when a suspension was required. And we did a lot of work making sure that people understand what is actually required by the law for suspension and what is not. So a lot of kids were being sent for things that weren't really suspension-worthy. And it was disproportionate, especially for our black and brown boys.
Yeah, well, but it's a good question. Like, if a student is misbehaving, we have to look at what the reason is. Our goal has always been to, suspension should be the last resort. So we've put in place a lot of different things. Our teachers are doing a lot of work to keep kids in class. And there is the concept that you're describing. It is a concept some people use where they suspend them out of the classroom, but then they're in what they call suspension room or whatever room. They're sitting in school, but it's, it's in-school suspension is actually a terrible idea, because they're not learning. And it becomes a place where a lot of, in, in a lot of cases, a lot of black and brown kids are kicked out of class, and that's what we don't have.
And I know that we're going to have a board study session on suspensions. And we can like go deeper into that conversation, and maybe also get clarity exactly so to make sure that we're answering all the questions as we go.
Yeah, in fact...
Forward to that discussion.
Yeah, so we're going to talk about discipline, and that's a really good discussion. So we were asking which board meeting in April is best for you to start at 4 o'clock, so we can do that for the hour study session. So we'll, we'll send you an invite to see which one works best for everybody. And then, yeah, that discipline conversation is a really important one. But I just want to say, the goal is not to suspend kids, and the goal is definitely not to suspend disproportionately, which was what was happening a lot, and that's been reduced.
Student Board Member, Indiana Chilton.
I just have a few questions, and then one is about, kind of relating to the suspension. So I know that like, there's some requirements by law, like if a student does this, you have to be suspended. So in terms of restorative justice, like, is that put into place before an event happens? Like, is there a way that we can make staff aware on campus about like potential conflict? And then intervene and do restorative justice before a child might do something that would result in us having to suspend them?
So I would say yes. I think that what you're kind of talking about, and I'm going to go back to our overarching theme for the school year, which is wise. Like, how do we create more welcoming, inclusive, and equitable spaces for all of our students? And part of that work, or under that, is restorative practices. Like, under that is our RIR protocol. How do we recognize, interrupt, and then repair harm? It doesn't necessarily, if things aren't egregious, because there are some things that like, we got to suspend for. But if we can create a climate and culture where everybody feels like they belong, and that we are making sure that students understand we're clear about the expectations from the very beginning for each classroom, each hallway, each school site, et cetera. If we're really explicit about what the expectations are, and everybody understands, and everybody, you know, like, then we have a chance at really not students making mistakes and getting into a place where like, you know what, that's actually something we can't not pay attention to, that we can't not suspend for. So I think our teachers and, and principals make every effort to really do that work, but it's never perfect. I think it's ongoing work. We talk about like, how do we make sure that we're doing that work? And when we started at the beginning of the year and are really clear and explicit about, here are the rules of the road. Here's how we do our work together. Here's how we're, we are, create a sense of belonging for everyone. We got to revisit that on a regular basis, because we're all human, and we forget. And, you know, we all need reminders about how we want to be humanizing to each other. So it's work. It's a great question, and it's ongoing work.
And then I just had another one in terms of the graduation requirement percentage. Is that the number of kids who don't receive diplomas like on graduation day? Or does that also factor in the students who, like, because seniors can take summer classes after, right, to just, to receive their diploma? Does that include, like, is that included in the percentage?
That would increase the numbers.
Okay, so, but is that, like, that's included in that, right? Or is it not?
For the 22, 23 school year, yes.
Oh, okay, so it's...
But not for 23, 24 yet. We'll get there.
Yeah. Just finish that conversation. So when we talk about all of the things that we have in place to make sure that there is less need to suspend, it's the wellness center, it's the SCL lessons, it's the adults on campus, it's the, in, in the increase in training for our supervision. All of those things help. Just the fact that, like, I'm at the high school, and when it's break time, there are adults everywhere in every nook and cranny, because things happen. Kids are kids. They're going to argue. They're going to have things that they need to deal with. It's that, and they can make those connections. So there are lots of things that we put in place, but there are certain things that we must suspend for, right? Drugs, drug sale, weapons. Those are no questions. Those are like automatic. But the rest of it is really like, do we need to suspend them, or can we work with them in school?
Trustee Whitaker, and then trustee Raymond.
So I know we've done a lot of work on parent engagement, and we are continuing to see more and more parents engage. Are there certain programs that we're seeing like a balloon of engagement that we haven't seen before that you're noticing?
I would definitely say our African-American Parent Advisory Committees and our Padres Unidos. Those two really have grown pretty substantially, especially at the elementary level, because both of those are kind of organizations were more already in place at the secondary level. But adding the elementary level into it has really blossomed, blossomed. Thank you. And I wanted to just point out the, the list of things that Superintendent Amati was referring to. I just wanted to put this slide back up. These are all the different actions that support a more welcoming, inclusive, supportive environment. And it's, it's a long list. It's a great list. And I would, I would say that it's a longer list than many school districts have to support students to have a positive, safe learning environment.
Uh, trustee Raymond.
More of a comment than a question, but I'm, I, well, two comments first. There's obviously so much information for you to go together for tonight, so thank you, team, for doing that and for packing so much in, because really, the LCAP, in my opinion, is what this is all about. I mean, this is why we're here. And then I'm, and then, but I also just wanted to say that I'm really excited to hear that LCAP presentations are going to be made at school sites. I think that's fantastic. I'm a huge proponent, I think as most of you know, of bringing as much of the district business as we can to the schools themselves, to the parents, where the parents go. And this is a great example of one way we can do that. So I'm really excited to hear that that's happening.
Ms. Chan shared a number that's huge. So the, the percentage that she shared, 43%, is our students who are economically disadvantaged. We went from 20...
Yes, we went from 29% to, yes, to the 43. It actually includes our EL and...
Unduplicated, okay. But our, our economically disadvantage is like...
It's now 39%.
39%. That's huge. Yeah, I mean, that says a lot about the, the economy.
Yeah, that's a lot. I mean, I remember the total number, not just the economically disadvantage, where years hovered around 23, 24, 25, and that was forever. Now it's just...
I have a question, some comments. The A-3G completion rate for our Hispanic Latino community concerns me when I think about California. That's our largest cohort of students. As someone who works at a university, you know, I just, I'm wondering, what are we doing differently, or can we do differently to ensure higher rates? You know, I think we, I know we have a Puente program. I know, I, I'm assuming that the DLI program, maybe we'll see in 10 or 15 years, will have an impact, right? I'm just, that just seems really unacceptable, and I don't like to say that, but what's, what's happening there?
So what I would say is, that's an area of work. When you see that data, none of us are satisfied with that. I think that there are a number of different things. Yes, definitely the DLI eventually will, will feed up to our high schoolers. And I think that we have to have, so one of the things that we do at the Padres Unidos, and Mrs. Del Torre can speak to those, because she attends those meetings on a regular basis, is have conversations with our families about what the requirements are to actually get into a CSU or UC. What does it mean? And how can you be a partner in making sure that all of our students get to that work? And then there's conversations about, this is what disproportionality is, like, right? So like I said, we have our African-American students that are getting close, so to the overall numbers. to the overall numbers, but even our overall numbers, although we're highly competitive with surrounding districts, right? But even 69.7% for overall, we want to see that at 90 plus, right? So we've got work to do in the classroom. How do we make sure that our instruction at tier one at every level is as strong as it possibly can be? That's some of our MTSS work. The partnership with our families to make sure that everybody understands the UC and CSU requirements. Work with our administrators about, and our counselors about, okay, so do students understand all of the requirements? You want to go to college and here, we do a lot of work already, but this just is an indicator that we need to do more work in all of those areas. And I don't know Superintendent Amati if.
I was going to say PK is starting next week or something at the middle school.
We get back from the break.
So I, I just feel like we need to get more information out about that and really like encourage people to take it. Because PK is exactly for the same reason. So it's kind of like eggs, they go every month or whatever. Parents are getting information on exactly what you were talking about, like how do you prepare your kids for college? It's a great program. We talked about it at PLC today. I know that Mr. McMaster said they were going to send some more information up, but we need to encourage more families to do that. The other thing is I think Mr. Howard, probably Trustee Howard remembers when we did the A to G, A to G conversation for an entire year. And because there are districts that make A to G a requirement for graduation and it actually backfires on kids. Cause a lot of kids do not graduate. And then in our community, a lot of times we hear, okay, they're not ready or don't even want to go to a four year, but they're going to a two year. We have a lot of our students who actually go to community college and finish. So, but yeah, great question. But I think PK is a really good gateway.
I know there's data out that, you know, so much of going to college is intergenerational know-how, right? You know, if a parent has gone, it's a guardian, that child is more likely to attend. But if you're a parent that doesn't know the system, right? So it's good to hear that we have some programs in place. And I just sort of, I made a a flippant comment about, you know, another report, right? I just, I, I, I do very much appreciate the data here and what, what was reported out tonight. I just appreciate that the state of California creates a lot of requirements. And sometimes when I see the reports that we see, I wonder if there couldn't be a way to reduce the administrative burden for our administrators, because I don't know what they're asking a lot of times. And I, I know that you all struggle with it. So I really appreciate the data that you pull together and the stories that you tell us. Because it really illuminates for us as policymakers about what we should be doing here. Appreciate you. Oh, yeah, yeah. Go on. Yep.
I just wanted to say that when I would get ninth graders often, you know, I mean, I usually had specialized kids with a lot of, you know, issues and transportation problems, so all of the whole gambit, right? But they often really didn't have any clue how high school worked. They, they kind of like had this like, you know, I got passed through in eighth grade, you know, they, and they passed me through seventh and I didn't do that much. And you know, I didn't really learn that much and I got passed anyway. And they thought that would keep happening. And some, for some of them, it took until 10th or even 11th grade before they realized how the high school system works, that if you don't pass Algebra I, we're just going to keep sticking you back into Algebra I over and over and over again. So yeah, a lot of communication that kids really understand what's coming up would be great.
Absolutely. And I'll just add one more. At the elementary level, we have several of our schools who are now Avid schools and part of Avid is really talking about college and career readiness and at early ages. So they get those messages. Like, we're going to go to college. They, they're, they're talking about universities. The teachers are posting about what, what it is that, what colleges they went to and having those conversations at younger ages. And then there's actually some really amazing executive functioning skills that happen in our Avid schools around note taking and organization and just all of those kind of like early college readiness skillset that we want to see happen at the elementary level. So they carry those to the middle school and high school so that we don't have ninth graders saying, oh, no, what about this college thing? And then the last thing I'll say is during the summer, we also, so there's lots of things that happen during the school year. Academic counselors work on that with them students. Also during the summer, we have Step Up. And there is conversation about how we transition from the elementary schools to the middle schools and how we transition from middle schools to the high schools. And what we're talking about this year is how do we add some of that executive functioning work into the summer work? So those are kind of some new ideas that we've been talking about and we think it'll help, but we'll, we'll keep on thinking about it and planning with our teachers and administrators and counselors to have those numbers be increased.
Yeah. I mean, I hear how the A through G kind of backfires, but I, heck, I wouldn't be against the idea. What if we were to make it a requirement that every middle school kid takes Avid? It sounds like that, there's some really critical skills there that could be learned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next is an action item. It's to approve the personnel report.
I move that we approve the personnel report.
Wow, that was.
I'll second.
Great. We have a one and a two. Student Board Member cannot participate in this action. Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams. And I am a yes. It passes. And now let us go to Board Member comments. Student Board Member Indiana Chilton, do you have anything to add?
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day to you. Student, not student, Trustee Raymond.
Only, right?
Right?
No, uh, no, actually I'm good being not a student anymore. Um, I'll be brief. So I got to go to Battle of the Valley, which was super duper fun. Creekside and Canyon truly battled it out. And I have to say Creekside gave Canyon a run for the money. And if, 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 if this week's JV Battle of the Valley is any indication, Creekside has taken that trophy home next year. That chicken is going to Creekside. So we'll see. I mean, you can, you can hold me to that or not, but I, it was, it was very fun to be at Battle of the Valley. And anyone who hasn't attended Battle of the Valley, highly recommend. It's just really fun. I also got to attend the Music Parents Society showcase on Friday evening. That was really beautiful as usual. I'm never not impressed with what our kids are doing in, in music. And I think that teachers who are leading them through making music on such a grand scale, it's just really impressive. And I, I just love it. It's just nice to be there and experience that too. I had a nice sight visit at Palomar's earlier this week. It was my first trip to Palomar's and it's such a special little school, really nice little spot. And and it was great to see just what that campus is like. And the vibe is definitely different, you know, from, from all the others. So those kids are lucky to be there, I think. And that's actually it. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Trustee Whitaker.
Thank you. I attended the board workshop with all of you. It was great to work together and learn more together. Appreciate it. And I don't think that I've represented the board on anything else recently.
Thank you. Trustee Howard.
I only have one thing to report. I was at the Eden Area ROP monthly meeting last week and went very well reorganized. I'm no longer president, I'm glad to say. And the one, I guess the one good piece of news in the last couple of months over there is they got a pretty big grant to partner and teach about electrical, electric vehicle maintenance, which is a really good, it's going to be a really big deal. So it's very nice.
One thing I like about my electric car is the minimal maintenance I've had to do on it. So I'm intrigued to hear what they do there. Thank you, Trustee Howard. Vice President Adams.
Uh, sure. I think I have four, maybe five things that yesterday was Inclusion Awareness Day. Wear orange. And you could drop into any school. So I dropped into Canyon Middle School. And I was able to visit a number of special ed classrooms. It was really good to see. You know, a couple of people, of course, that I knew around, right? Cause I know some of those folks. And then some classrooms with some young teachers that I hadn't met before. So that was really, it was really wonderful to see them. And the kids were so cute and so sweet. The special ed board workshop, of course, where we got to look at some of the data that was in our LCAP and we got to discuss and understand that data quite a bit, a lot better. I went to Stories of Hope about students getting mental health help. And it included a student from Castro Valley and also the, the parent of that student works for a district as well. So that was really a fantastic film, should be watched. And it's to encourage people to get help when they, they need mental health help. And I, hopefully that movie will be distributed around, you know, our district and that sort of thing in appropriate places for age.
Yeah, I, I think we just, we don't have the rights. We were lucky because of that parent that they did it for free. So they only, that group, Z group has to go and do the film. But we can talk to her to see if we do it again. But it takes a lot to get people and it's such a powerful film.
Very powerful film. There were like four different students. Yeah, very good. I think on the 5th of February, we had Cafe or Community Advisory Funding for Education. And yeah, right. And I think also there was Community Alliance on February 1st. Yeah. Okay. So that's all of them.
I too was at the performance on Friday and for the Music Parents Society, I want to thank all the volunteers that put that together. That's, that's quite the effort and the fact that our students are willing to perform for us. I was a proud parent, of course, and did all I could to like wave at my, at Teddy and to make them feel really embarrassed. So that was always fun. Sold a lot of hot dogs. I've been selling hot dogs, y'all. Trying to raise some money for the band to go to Disneyland. So I will be a chaperone on that trip and we are, we at Pete's Hardware on February 24th and 25th, if you'd like to buy a hot dog or two.
A lot of $20 hot dogs.
Thank you for buying a $20 hot dog. Please come back again.
Please come back again.
And then I want to thank the staff and the, the board for a really robust special board workshop. That was helpful to gain in data like that. It's, it's really helpful. With that, since I don't think we want to be, we can stay here till 11:00 PM. That's like it says here. But I think at the discretion of the board, I'm going to call this, this, this meeting to an end, but I just want to wish everyone lots of love out there and be kind.
And be fine.